I'd like to call this meeting of the Coventry Town Council to order at 6:00 PM. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Brown.
Yeah.
Councilmember Capaldi.
Here.
Vice President Verducci.
Here.
President Lima.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. In the event of an emergency, those present this evening can exit outdoors labeled number one or two in the back of council chambers to the front lawn or back parking lot of Town Hall. Moving on to meeting minutes from prior meetings, we have one set this evening, February 25th, 2025, open session. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Capaldi, second by Vice President Verducci. Any discussion? Hearing non-clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi.
Yes.
Vice President Verducci.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Or in the affirmative zero and the negative motion passes.
We'll move now to public hearings. This evening is a public hearing number one of two on our provisionally adopted budget for the FY '26 fiscal year, starting us on July 1st, 2025. Do I hear a motion to open public hearing?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Capaldi, second by Councilwoman Brown. Any discussion? Hearing non-clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi.
Yes.
Vice President Verducci.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Or in the affirmative zero and the negative motion passes.
Manager Prillo, if you could just give a brief recap of the budget and any updates that have occurred since your presentation last month or earlier this month.
Sure. Thank you, Council President. I believe this is a very responsible budget that the council has passed. The total budget is $127 million. It's about a 2.7 increase to the levy. The actual increase on the tax rate will be 1.6%. Proposed right now, we do not have final numbers in, but that's what it's looking like right now, will be about a 1.6% tax increase. On a home that costs approximately $400,000, it's about a $100 increase for the year. That's what this budget has in it. We're doing a lot of things in this budget. We're adding very necessary positions that we didn't have the opportunity to in the past. We're paving roads. We're funding the school deficit. We're funding the school bond. We're purchasing garbage trucks. We're opening Briar Point. I think we've listened to what the council's priorities are, and we think this budget incorporates all of those priorities while also balancing the taxpayer money. So with that being said, Mr. Savetti is here to answer any questions, along with, we do have some department directors that were able to make it. So they are also willing to step up and answer any questions that the public may have at this time. Thanks.
Thank you. There were a couple of questions that were asked at our last public comment and then some we received via email. I figured maybe we could address those before we get the public to come up. So a couple of them, there were questions regarding some of the positions getting higher than 3% raise. I don't know if, Manager Prillo, you wanted to talk about that first?
Sure. I know during the budget hearings, we explained this as well. So Director McGee is getting above the 3% raise because he's going to be performing general contractor duties over at the annex. So we have a $5 million annex project going on there, and that needs some oversight. Normally for a project of that size, you would hire a general contractor. A general contractor for a job like that would be between $150,000 and $200,000. So Director McGee said he would take on those duties and responsibilities to help save the town money and allow us to put that extra money into the project. So based on that, I'm asking for an extra 7% for him for a total of a 10% raise. The other large increase of 10% is for the planning director, Doug McLean. So Doug is going to be taking on the additional duties as the zoning official. So all cities and towns have a zoning official. We currently do not have one. We do plan on putting Doug in that position. So that's a partial reason for the increase, along with there have been other municipalities trying to reach out to him to basically steal him from us. So we are trying to keep him. He has a lot of talent. He has a great team that he's built over in planning, and starting over would be disastrous for this town with the amount of development we have. We had a meeting last night, and we've got over 15 projects currently going on. So for someone else to step in and take that over would be monumental, so we can't afford to lose him. So those are the two biggest increases besides 3%.
The town clerk was something that we gave her mid-year. She too was approached
by a competing municipality for her services, so we ended up giving her an increase as well to offset that stealing of our staff.
Just looking here at some of the other questions. Can you explain for the public, there was also a question about how impact fees are kept track of and inventoried?
So we keep track of impact fees. They change monthly. So anytime there's a development project, the building department collects impact fees. Right now, it's approximately $6,800. Those are divided up into seven different categories based on the ordinance. They utilize to make purchases, whether it's Parks and Recreation, the school department, the police department, roads and bridges. There's categories that we use. If we don't want to use a capital line, or it's not a budgeted item, we're able to use impact fees to make that purchase outside of the budget. And those are calculated bi-monthly.
And lastly, the other question we received was with respect to the pond. I think folks were thinking that the pond was going to end up being its own line item in the budget, Johnson's Pond. Can you just speak to that?
So right now, the redevelopment association has $495,000. That was given to them through APA. That's the first, if you want to say, investment we're going to have on the pond now that we own it. Obviously, as the CRDA goes through their process, there may be a need for additional funds, but as of right now, that's the only money that's going towards the pond right now is the APA money to CRDA. There's no other budgeted line item for Johnson's Pond.
There was also a question about why we allocate funds every year for a new police cruiser, if you want to talk about that.
So police cruisers are vital to doing the operation. We need to at least have one new one every year in the budget to keep the fleet new and alive. I mean, those vehicles are on the road 24/7. Once we get behind, it turns into a garbage truck situation where we're trying to play catch-up and there's going to be maintenance issues. So we try to get at least one in the budget, and then we try to purchase another one, usually to impact fees or sometimes forfeit your money. But we like to get at least one or two per year in order to keep track of the cars and keep them up and running. The additional cars that we do have, we utilize on paid police details. So those vehicles are out there making money for us every day. So it's really we're reinvesting in the police department.
And then lastly, there was a lot of outreach and discussion about the proposed 3% raise for the non-union department heads. Can you just talk about how many of those there are and the rationale in your proposed budget for that?
There's approximately 47 to 50 non-union personnel. The top behind that is the Council 94 Union, the Teachers Union. Well, the teachers don't really affect the town budget, but the police contract is 3%, Council 94 is 3%. I think it's only fair that directors and other non-union people also get the 3%. If not, they kind of fall behind. So my experience is that sometimes non-union people don't get the raises contractually, and what happens is the number two or the number three in that department ends up making more than the director, and that creates a little bit of animosity. So I think it's just parity. If we're able to negotiate a contract with the union people, I think the non-union people should have the same opportunity to get increases.
Okay. Were there other questions members of the council received as outreach to want to ask ahead of time before we invite the public up? When looking at projected real estate transfer taxes, have we been realistic in the current real estate market? This person indicated they feel it's under revenue.
Again, if, you know, as you know, the budget's a projection, right? If I knew where we were actually going to be at, or I knew what was going to happen in the future, I probably wouldn't be sitting here. I'd be off on a beach someplace. So I think, you know, we look at the past trends. So what's happened with the real estate, you know, where we've been with the real estate transfer tax. We look at a three-year history, try to project where that's going to be. We're comfortable with that number, the way it's budgeted. Obviously, you know, we would recognize that if during the year we're seeing the revenue projections not going to come in where we budget it for, we'd have to put spending freezes on or make cuts. But right now, we, you know, although there may not be a lot of, you know, significant transactions happening, or I should say, a lot of real estate on the market, there are still sales that are happening, right? As soon as, generally, as soon as the residential property hits the market, it's being sold. So there's still quite a few transactions happening. So again, that's our best estimate at this time based on historical averages.
Other question, what are the miscellaneous licenses under the revenue part of the budget?
I'd have to get all the detail for that. Again, I'd have to drill down to that. Unfortunately, I haven't been in the last day or so, but I can drill into that.
Have we confirmed with the state that the library state aid will not be impacted by recent federal cuts to library funding?
Yes, as of right now, that's the figure that we've been provided by the state, similar to the other numbers that are in this budget. You know, we're utilizing the governor's proposed budget. Obviously, if those numbers get changed by the legislators before it's passed in June, we'd have to come back and readdress the budget. But at this point, we're told that the number that's included in there for the library is what we can anticipate.
On page 25, says the town council spent over $5,000 on office supplies. Is this something we should allocate funds for again?
Again, I think some of those questions are going back several years, so I'm not quite sure. Yeah, I understand the relevance, but I think that particular one's going back to something that happened in either 2024 or 2023, and I believe that's the year that we did a dedication of this council chambers for the former attorney or judge for the town. So I think that was the majority of the cost that were in there. There were some one-time purchases that, you know, if you look where we've at current year and even the last fiscal year, we haven't approached that number.
On page 26, the question is, what are the dues and memberships for? I don't know which, I don't have that.
I think that's the, yeah, without the exact page in front of me, but I believe that's in the town manager's budget. And in the town manager's budget, you have dues and memberships, which the biggest component of that is the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns membership, which is around $18,000 per year. The other dues and membership line is, well, $1,500 or so, I believe, or actually $1,000. I'm sorry, $1,000, and that's for professional memberships that the town manager may become involved in, again, to stay with the, you know, we work with many other communities that have their associations. So you'll see that type of membership in various departments, whether it's the town clerk's office, tax assesses. It's good to have that resources, as you know.
Same page. Question is, what is the $5,000 for Johnson's Pond? Where did the $2023 $50,000 for the pond go since it was not leased that year?
So in 2023, I believe it was leased, we spent $56,000 on Johnson's Pond that year for the lease expense. I believe the lease ended in March of '24, maybe, or probably during fiscal '24. So right now, that $5,000 that we're projecting, or actually $3,000 that's in this budget, is the current cost that we anticipate for the, I don't want to call him the gatekeeper, but the gentleman that maintains the water height.
Okay. There's a question about the number of clerks we have. I'm assuming in reference to the town clerk's office. Dan, I don't know if you want to explain what each of the clerks does, the functions they have. They're asking if there's redundancy and if that can be streamlined, or maybe Joanne, if you want to speak to that?
So there are four clerks in that office, but again, we'll let Joanne, it's Joanne and three additional clerks.
So we have our vital records clerk, we have our probate clerk, and we have our licensing clerk, and then myself. All of the clerks are trained on recording, and they're there to help the public when they come in to research documents in our vault. And there's other various tasks that would happen during the course of the day. And I would say that we're not understaffed.
And that office, if I may add, that office also, this current fiscal year and going in the future, that office is now also taking care of the municipal court services.
Page 32, the registrar clerk. Has this position been vacant and is now being filled? Is it vital? Can we withhold hiring another year?
It is vital. We can't do it without her.
I think we've only had one person full-time in that office previous for 13 years, but most, that person retired, and I think most towns our size or larger have two people full-time in that office?
Correct. Yeah, for the size of our town, we definitely need two people. That's why they had additional person, well, half a person, because right now it was a part-timer in there already. So now it's the new registrar, Marcy, and she's going to be hiring a full-timer in July if this budget passes correctly.
Page 41, how many tax clerks is this salary for? It's a 98% increase from the previous fiscal year.
So the tax collectors department actually has two clerks in addition, I'm sorry, the tax collectors department, has two clerks in addition to the tax collector. It's not that large of an increase. I believe in the previous year's budget, we had budgeted for a deputy tax collector. In that position, we decided not to fill that position. Instead, just maintain the clerks there. So you would see a decrease in the deputy tax collector salary in the budget going fiscal 2025 budget. That was a $60,000 line item, and we had the clerks at 55,940. Now the combined's $110,000. So we still only have three positions budgeted in that department, two clerks in addition to the tax collector.
I noticed that a lot of questions that I got to were kind of along the same line as this. There's a title of a job, but you don't know how many people have that job. Is there a reason why we don't say for clerks, or for mechanics, or is there any reason? Can we institute that moving forward so the public and the council knows how many?
Yeah, we could certainly add that. We did pass out to the council upon one of the council members' requests, a list of all the full-time equivalents. So I believe every council member did receive a list of each department and how many full-time equivalent employees were in each department. But going forward, we could certainly make a note to add that in the budget document.
There was a, there was a comment about breaking down the legal costs into more line items and categories. I think there was an email chain between you and the solicitor about him providing detail on what he feels should be charged to what and where and adding that detail. So it sounds like we're already there. Page 57, do we have more than one assistant animal control officer? That salary line is higher than the animal control officer?
Yeah, so the animal control department currently has three full-time employees, two in the assistance position, and then one director.
Page 88, Parks and Rec has many employees but are consistently over expenditures and under revenue. They seem to be paid high compared to other towns for the size program they run. Can a lead mechanic be shared with DPW for cost savings?
Parks and Rec has lots of seasonal staff. So for all the programs that they run, they have all their seasonal staff. The mechanics that are working, that's the first part of that, is the reason there's a lot of people there is because of all the seasonal staff. The question regarding the mechanic is, the mechanic at Parks and Rec works on lawn mowers, trimmers, that type of small equipment stuff. The mechanics that work at DPW are working on garbage trucks, plows, and so forth. So there's no real interchangeability regarding those skill sets. So I think it'd be a concern to try to move one person to the other position.
Our temporary employees at the Briar Point Beach staff, how much do we anticipate that project costing? I think with $17,000 for the weekend and holiday staffing.
Correct.
Human Services, page 99, we have two program assistants. Can this be merged? Are the social workers licensed, and is that vital to their core function? I guess I'll do that question first.
Have the director come up and explain that. That's okay?
The other question was, the Annex Learning Center programs will be run through this department. What is the projected programming cost? They do not have a revenue sheet. Do they get any grant funding? Screen light. There you go.
All right. Thanks for the opportunity to answer the questions. Let me start, I'll start with the annex first, if that's okay. The renovations are being paid through the U.S. Department of Treasury in the state of Rhode Island Pandemic Recovery Office. The funding is specifically for the renovation of the space, but we're also going to be utilizing Pandemic Recovery Office grant for programming. So that's why there's nothing in the line item for anything around programming, because we are going to be paying for that piece with both grant funding and collaborative partnerships with the Department of Health, the Department of Education, and also Department of Labor and Training, as well as some community service providers that are going to be able to bring services right there so folks can have the services in our town. There was a question previously on transportation too, and that's where those three vans come into play. So July, we will have one van that'll be dedicated partially to that building once it's up and running, so that we'll be able to get people from our town into that service and be able to access things that they'd have to go out of town or not be able to access because of transportation. The questions in regards to two part-time program assistants, well, actually, one is a, they're not the same position, that's one of them. One, the program assistant helps with programs around elderly services at the senior center. That's a part-time position. And then the, the social work assistant position is a full-time position. That person is responsible for running our food bank, where we service probably about 300 families per month, sometimes more depending on the time of year. That person also provides ancillary support meets with folks around health insurance and accessing state and federal programming, so that that full-time position will, they're totally separate from each other, separate tasks. And previously, we had three social workers, four social workers, and now we are at three. So we're doing the same level of service with less staff. I hope that explains and answers those questions. If there's anything I missed, please.
No, I think that's it for the questions in this from a couple of residents on human services.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Page 102, how many children's librarians work for the $90,990? And it says, we have a lot of librarians, and while we have many open hours, this may be something to look at for cost savings.
I will address the children's staff first. So this, this line item is for three part-time children's staff and one full-time outreach librarian. And I do agree that it would be much easier to read if it was all broken down. That's something that I wanted to do, and as this is my first budget season, it just was not the top priority, but I can understand how that's confusing. So that is for three part-time staff members and one full-time outreach librarian. And what was the second question?
It's something about, it seemed like a lot of librarians could, and a lot of open hours, and asking if there was opportunity to consolidate or consider cutting hours back. I think that was the question, something like that.
So as some of you probably already know from last budget season, we have minimum standards to maintain in order to keep our state aid. And one of those minimum standards is how many hours we're open. So we are not able to cut how many hours we're open. And regarding staffing, we are just barely fully staffed. So I would not say that there is anyone who can be cut or anyone who is redundant.
I think that was it for the library.
I can just add to that, you know, in addition to obviously maintaining the budget, it's important that we maintain their budget, because if we were to reduce their budget compared to previous year funding, we also lose the grant aid. So we have to maintain the budget levels.
That's correct. Thank you. Mr. Coward, I don't know if you want to come up and just give another quick refresh on the school's budget?
Good evening, everyone. So the school department and the town worked closely together this year using some resources made available to us through the Order of the General's Office Municipal Finance to do a five-year projection based on what we thought our expenses would be. With our five-year projection, looking at not only salaries, benefits, but coming up with some estimates using some percentile increases year over year. And then what we did is we worked with the town leadership to come up with how our expense needs match up with the revenue needs from the town, projected revenue needs. And what we did is we kind of closed the gap between where we started in terms of what we needed and where the town leadership said we could meet at. And we basically developed a budget that was percentile, exactly what the town said they could allocate, is exactly what we asked for. So this year, there was, there was no back and forth in terms of us coming in higher and asking for more than what was, you know, discussed in our December meeting and then meetings after that. So on the school side, we do our own hearings. So we had three sets of hearings where we talked about revenue expenses, all the things that are part of our budget. And then I did a presentation for the town council. So I'm available to answer any questions that come up.
Were there any other questions council members received from the public they wanted to ask? I did, I know that Tricia Hunt, I believe she's watching, myself, her, and the town manager and finance director had a great call for about an hour and a half going through a lot of her questions, which I just repeated some of the answers for with the town manager. I believe what Mr. Councilman Brown just shared was a letter from about 10 or 12 residents with a list of questions. I will say I received many pieces of outreach via email for support for the Briar Point staffing for weekends and holidays from that community. But I haven't received any other specific outreach regarding the budget beyond what I've just shared. So I just want to double check before we open it up. All right. We'll open it up. Members of the public in chambers, feel free to come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. This is public hearing on the proposed budget.
Hi, Brittany Boyer, 318 Town Farm Road. I want to start with a question. I couldn't find an answer. I'm looking to see if town positions have capped salaries, if anybody knows the answer to that question.
Capped salaries?
Yes.
No.
No. So I know that-
No.
No. So I know that, and I ask because sometimes when you look online at open state positions or other open towns, they'll give a range of kind of what their salary and titles, but we do not have that.
We do not have that.
Okay. All right. As to the 3% raise across the board, I'm assuming that has to do with the cost of living increases. Am I right in assuming that? Or is that straight to just parity?
It's just parity.
Okay. I am respectful of parity. I totally get that, and I believe it's fair. Right now, the average raise of the cost of living is about a 2.5%. And while it is fair to keep everybody on parity, so that that clashing, like you talked about, doesn't happen, we have to remember that there are some families in town that are being taxed out of their homes. I know it's about $100 on that rough estimate of a home, but that means a lot to some families. There have been people who, you know, have talked about publicly that, you know, they're moving because of all of this going on, and I just want that to be in the back of everyone's mind. Coventry is not a very wealthy place. I don't remember the percentage off the top of my head, but there is a high percentage of needy families in town, of young families in town, and I just want that to be something that everyone's thinking of, when they're thinking about a small increase, like $100 a year. Remember, that's not just in taxes, it's everything people are doing right now. It's $100 at the grocery store, it's $100 on your mortgage, it's $100 everywhere. So I just kind of want that to be in everyone's brains, kind of as we're talking about this. As far as the 10% raise on the clerk line, personally, this is just my thought, I feel that's a lot to retain a position. I know that position is very important, and I know that the clerk does a wonderful job here. I am also in charge of hiring and firing in my role, and I have had to let wonderful staff move on, simply because our business could not afford, you know, what they were being offered at another place. And I know that's a really sad thing to do, but sometimes you have to take that into consideration. I think we also need to take into consideration the fact that somebody can walk at any time. I am not saying that that is the clerk's, you know, motive or what she wants to do, but it is there. I also want to take into consideration, when somebody gets a raise that high, how many years they have left until retirement, because we will have to fill that role and start training somebody brand new, just as if she were to take a position somewhere else. I also think it's hard to approve it or make changes at this point, because I believe I heard the town manager say that that raise was already given.
Part of that was already given.
It was already given.
3% is the newest part of that.
Okay. So take that into consideration as well. I had a question about Briar Point, and I'm just looking to see if the money planned to work, staff, and maintain is going to have its own line item, or if that is going to go in Parks and Rec.
Probably Parks and Rec temporary staffing.
Okay. Is that as far as, you know, temporary staffing, as far as like cleanup and sanitation and all of that?
That's just for the gatekeeper and the monitor.
Okay. So what about the trashcans and the porta-potties and?
That's going to be part of the DPW's regular.
DPW budget? Okay.
They're regular duties.
Perfect. And I want to make sure I'm getting the name right. Was it Director McGee that you said was taking on the general contractor role? Okay. With that 7% raise he's getting, I'm looking to see if that is going to create a significant amount of overtime for him, if he's taking on that new role on top of his regular role.
He doesn't get any overtime.
He doesn't get it, so it's going to be a straight salary pay for him? Okay. Perfect. Thank you. As far as restructuring the solicitor's budget, I'm happy to hear that everyone was kind of on board with making sure we're putting things in those items, they belong. One question I have, looking through the packet that we had talked about at the last meeting, the $9,000 monthly, is that the retainer fee for us to keep Mr. Angel?
$9,000 flat.
A flat fee.
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you. What else do I have here? The other thing that was just kind of brought up that I thought was interesting, the mechanics being shared between DPW and Parks and Rec, I think we should have a little more faith in them. I feel like if you can work on a garbage truck and large trucks, I feel like small engines is probably something that they can dabble in as well. It might not hurt to have people on standby that can kind of go across. Also, looking through this 111 pages, what I'm seeing the most of is overage in office supplies. That can get a little slush fund-ish too. So I'm hoping, if I remember correctly, part of Councilman Pasquale's, one of his resolutions was being able to see if parts of those areas are over budget. I'm hoping we can maybe get a printout or have access to what we had for the solicitor. If all of a sudden, somebody is a few thousand dollars over budget in office supplies, if we can look in to see what we're purchasing.
That's part of their whole entire budget, so they're accountable for their over-supplies just like everything else in their budget.
Right. But my.
If they're over, then that's part of their.
Right. So that's, okay, perfect. That's what I'm asking. All right. That's all I had. Thank you so much.
Actually, one second. You brought up something pretty troubling last Tuesday about schools not having paper or pens.
Yes.
Mr. Coward, I don't know if you can address that. That's pretty deeply concerning, so I want to make sure that.
I actually had my daughter's principal call me and reach out. Can I share quickly what happened in that realm?
Sure.
My daughter's principal called me on Wednesday morning, very concerned, and asked me, what made me think that the school did not have supplies? And I said, well, it was a note that I received home from her teacher, saying that there would be no homework for, you know, the rest of the school year, they didn't have paper. And she said that she didn't know about that note going home. And I said, well, what about, I had to go get two big janitor push carts to get all the stuff out of, I have a SUV, I had it packed with stuff. And she said, I never heard anything about any donation that was made to the school. So that was a little troubling. She offered to reimburse me for all of the things I supplied, but because we did that as a donation from our farm, I don't want any reimbursements. I would never take any reimbursements. But I just want everyone to be aware that that's what happened. We had people all across donate, and the principal never heard about the donation when I dropped it off at the front office that morning.
Okay, yeah, just because, I also feel like if that was the case, that Mr. Coward would be knocking on our door saying we're.
I would hope so, and that's where my concern was.
Yeah.
And why I made it such a priority for me, to make sure that those items were brought to the school. So.
Okay.
I don't know.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other members of the public, public comment on the proposed budget? Just make sure the microphone's green and state your name and address for the record.
Michael Madonna, 1151 Plainfield Pike. First of all, thank you for all the hard work on the budget. Looks like a lot of work went into it, and it's more detailed than I remember, just looking in my ears. Two quick questions, though, for the border canvases. It doesn't seem like we have any money set aside for poll workers, and I know that we're going to have a special election this year. So I don't know if we want to address that, because we don't want to be over budget. And also, quick question on, there's a line item for the townwide referendum. How do we know what that?
That's if the council doesn't get a supermajority vote.
Got it.
Then we budget for that contingency, because there's, if the charter is, if, say, next Monday, the council doesn't get a supermajority to approve the budget, a second budget's proposed, there's back and forth. If that budget B doesn't get a supermajority vote, then both budgets go to the voters and they pick one.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
I am concerned if poll workers are not accounted for, though. Do we?
Yeah, again, at the time this budget was put together, we didn't anticipate any elections. So we'd have to make that adjustment at this point, or we could certainly look to take the funds that you just mentioned. You know, hopefully, we don't need to go to the special ballot for the budget, we can use that money to allocate it over.
Okay.
You know, we'd have to work with the border canvases, but I don't envision the same number of polls having to be open that, you know, general election, so we'd have to pin down that cost. And whether, you know, we add it to this budget and we have to make some adjustments or.
Okay.
Look to utilize reserves.
Good call out, Mr. Madonna. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think the plan right now is just to open two precincts, I believe, for the special election, so I wouldn't think it's going to be that cumbersome of a financial lift to handle that.
Vice President Verducci.
Just a question as to our process. Is that something we want to amend at the budget night vote?
Yeah. Well, it sounds like they're going to add it to the budget, too.
So we'll have a new provisional budget? Or?
It would be an amendment that we would make to the budget the night you're voting, and we would change the bottom-line number.
On that resolution? Yeah.
Be a resolution.
I'm guessing that's how we would make a change.
We'll get that number and see, obviously, what that amounts to.
If we can make.
Maybe minimal based on the number.
Net zero.
Yeah.
It's not going to be huge.
Yeah, no. For those who are, I think, I'm probably up here, tonight and Saturday are really meant for the public. If those of us up here have other ideas or concerns, or would like to come forward with math ready to go for amendments, I recommend meeting with staff at a time, so that way, that night, we're not having to go into recess multiple times to make sure we're adding things correctly, which we've had to do in the past. So feel free to do that, but really, it's, we try to reserve these two public hearings for the public to make their sentiment out. Any other members in council chambers, members of the public, come forward to the microphone, public hearing on the proposed budget? Oh. No, I haven't gone to Zoom yet.
Jerry Narkowitz, 21 Beach Street, Coventry, Rhode Island. I am so happy to see the budget reflecting money for Briar Point. I know you've put a lot of effort into it, and you can trust me, it's been a bane for all of us who live around, near, on the lake. So, thank you. Thank you for that. Basically, that's really all I want to say. Do you have a question in that, will 17,000 make it?
What do you mean? Can you elaborate?
Sure. I think about the individual who's sitting at the front and allowing people to come in. And the only time that people can come in is if they have a pass. Without having sales at the gate, at least in the very beginning of the year, I'm wondering if people are going to get very upset when they drive from Providence to Central Falls, Warwick, and they can't get in, and it's Saturday morning. So I'm wondering if the 17,000 takes into account a possible snafu like that. So I thought I would bring it to your attention, at least to give it some thought before you finalize everything.
I don't understand, Mr. Narkowitz, what snafu would cost money, additional money?
I think he means that someone who's getting minimum wage, who is probably a young person, being kind of rough-armed by somebody who's upset that they can't enter the beach without a pass.
That, and also, from my understanding, the beach passes will not be sold at the gate.
Correct.
So it's Saturday, your office will not be open.
Correct.
And the person that has driven from Providence goes up to the gate like he did last year, and he no longer can get in. And think about that 18-year-old young man, young lady, sitting there and trying to say to that individual, and I know, the police will come, but it can be really hostile. Maybe something to think about. I don't know if you've thought about it from that standpoint. And then, the last thing I'll ask is, what makes a supermajority now?
All five.
All five?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Good luck.
Do you want to answer that?
Yeah, it is all five. The way the charter is written, it does not say supermajority of those seated, it says supermajority of council. So the budget must pass by zero.
Okay. Appreciate all the hard work you guys do. I know it's sometimes thankless, sometimes hurtful. So I wish you all a wonderful evening.
Thanks, Jerry. Mr. Guthrie, you had your hand up.
Scott Guthrie, 318 Plaig Drive. Question for the manager of trash trucks. Are we going to have a fleet replacement plan, just like the police department now? So we don't run into the problem that we ran into before?
Yeah, so there's one coming in two weeks, hopefully.
These are the ones that were purchased in one big order, correct?
We're doing three at a time.
So, are you going to build something into capital for that? That you'll always have enough money saved to replace a truck?
We're putting 120K a year, correct? Now, that's what was supposed to happen when the bond for these trucks was passed in 2014. We are putting that 120 away now.
Supermajority of seven would be five. Thank you. So a supermajority of five would be four and one. Does not specify. So a three-to-two vote wouldn't be a supermajority with five people on the council, a four-to-one would be. At least, that's the way that I understand, you know, how the hardest all works. The other question to follow up on, Mr. Madonna, was it? Now, there's three people up for recall. What happens if they get the people? You're going to have to have another election for that. Personally, I'm opposed to this recall stuff, but voters have their choice. They don't want what they want to do, but that's another thing that I might want to take into consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Anyone else in council chambers, come forward to the microphone, just state your name and address for the record. Make sure the green light is on.
Susan Morris, I live at 325 Richardson Road. Woman asked me to ask, when was the last time water was tested at Briar Point?
Is Mr. Savigny still here? You just sent an email today about this. Did you want to come up and speak to that? The Parks and Rec director can speak to that.
That was, both with the town service and through the state, was the beach season. So it was last season. Technically, the Department of Environmental Management went for Cenobacteria, found that there was a positive test in November, but the other test is typically during the beach season, from Memorial Day to Labor Day. That would coincide with our own testing from R.I. Analytical would also be within that period as well. So I just spoke with a member of the Department of Health, Jillian Choppy, and to let her know I am the contact now, and she'll be informing me of the, very soon, of the 2025 testing schedule or testing period.
Thank you.
So when I'm looking at the budget, when I compare how much the rate, how much everything has gone up over last year's budget, the town council budget's up almost 30%, canvassing's up 30%, information and technology almost 40%, roads and bridges, oh, almost 40%. These just seem a bit exorbitant to me in one year, to have a difference between the 2020, 24, 25 budget and the 25, 26 budget. I know we've talked about raises of 3% and all of that stuff, but when I look at the change between one year and the next, that does seem to be a bit exorbitant to me, because my income sure hasn't gone up like that. The other issue is when we talk about roads and bridges being up 30%.
That's additional staffing, most likely, is a majority of that.
Okay. Do you, so I live on Richardson Road, otherwise known as Crater Road. We have huge potholes, and I was told last week that we're not going to get them repaved. We only need a quarter of a mile of the road repaved, but we don't travel enough on it. There's not enough traffic on it. But there are 38 homes on that road, and we can't get it paved, not even the quarter of a mile that's the worst part of it. So when I see all of that going up.
Road paving's not based on the amount of travel, it's based on an index that we have.
That's what your DPW person told me, who was cold patching the potholes.
Cold patching potholes will do, but a repaving is based on a PCI index study that we have independently done, rates all the roads in the town. Based on that rating is how the list gets put in front of the council for repaving every year.
So how do I get that list?
It's on the website, on the DPW.
It's called the PCI?
PCI Index.
PCI.
It's called the street scan. I think if you type into the magnifying search bar and type in "street scan," that should come up.
So after watching all of the streets on the other side of town, pretty much getting paved, Lower Harkney Hill, Hopkins Hill, Arnold Road, all of those roads got nicely paved, and our road just sits there like that, and it has been for years.
So with the PCI score, the council made a decision when it started to incrementally fund the road paving line item, that instead of just going by the lowest scores, it said it wanted to spread out what got paved every year across all five. what got paved every year across all five districts. So, each of the districts...
Could you spread it out to my district?
So, each of the districts get the same amount of money, each, all five districts get. What is the amount?
So far, the only...
100,000, okay?
So far, the only road I've seen paved in Western Coventry is Sisson.
So, Western, unfortunately, it is either one or two roads because a lot of the roads are so long that they cost more to...
We need a quarter of a mile, literally a quarter of a mile. And there are six motorcyclists on this Richardson Road. I am one of them. The dangerous part of my ride is going in and out of my road, and I don't want gravel and oil. The patches they put in last week, they'll be gone in two weeks. And part of it is the garbage trucks that come down. We've had construction going on, so cement trucks have been going down. So, the heavy trucks that come down occasionally are part of the problem. But, anyway, it's frustrating. So, I am curious as to why the increase seems to be so much bigger over last year's.
What is the, what's the overall increase to the budget over FY '25?
It's 4.89% is overall budget increase. So, I'm just, as the resident speaking, I'm trying to locate some of the numbers she's referring to, and I'd be happy to meet with her to go through those because I'm seeing information technology's up 4.8%. I don't see any department whose budget's up 30% or 40% as it was just referred to.
Can you come up to the microphone?
Please.
If you look at page 22, Town Council, percentage change FY '24 to FY '25, 29.64%. And maybe I'm just looking at the wrong numbers.
That's going from a five-member council to a seven-member council.
That increases 12.46%. Again, I'm not sure what column you're referring to.
The last column, page 22. 39.2 on legal solicitor, 30.61. These are the percentage change from fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '25.
You're looking at fiscal '26 to '25.
No.
25 to 26. We're going into fiscal '26, so you should be comparing the provisional budget that was adopted.
One column. Never mind.
I was going to say, I don't remember anything double-digit increases.
The biggest increase we had was the, yeah, the biggest increase we had was through the planning department, and that was a result of a fellowship grant where we have a new employee who's fully funded by the state. When that contract ends with the state, that employee's contract is terminated. That's the largest increase that you see in the budget.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Anyone else in council chambers where we move to Zoom? Public comment on the budget? Yes, Mr. Sassy? You're good.
My name is Roy Sassy. My address is 34 Rollinson Drive in Coventry. I have two comments. First, I'm very, very pleased with the proposed budget. And I'm also glad to see everyone on their best behavior this evening. Secondly, I have a concern. We had a situation on Rollinson Drive last summer. Someone had dumped motor oil into one of the storm drains. It blocked it. It backed up into the street and onto my neighbor's property. I called DPW. They came right out, corrected the problem. What can we do to make sure that this problem doesn't happen again? Because that's, those storm drains drain, as I understand it, into Lake Tyok. We cannot have that polluted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sassy. We'll make sure that DPW files up on that. Yes? Yeah, sure. Just come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Diane Cowell, 97 Mohawk Street. I just want to let the gentlemen know that last summer and a little bit into the fall, we worked, we being a number of different volunteers from the Tyok Lake Association, worked with Save the Bay, and we went around and we put cemented tags on every drainage that we could come across that drains into the lake saying, "Do not dump drains into the lake." So, you know, we may not have gotten every single catch based in that there is, but we did our best to try, and it's an ongoing process. So, we're working on trying to do what we can to educate people.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, council chambers, before we move to Zoom? Sure.
Brittany Boyer, 318 Town Farm Road. Mr. Manager, without doing step increases to get everyone to parity and without having caps on any salary, are we just looking at a 3% increase forever, as long as they're employed?
No, I would say if the contract negotiations, say, with Council '94 or the police department resulted in a 2% raise, then I would be putting forth a 2% raise for non-unions. So, I think parity needs to be with the CBAs, in my opinion. So, again, if there's, if it's below three, then I would be proposing that lower limit. Say it's 012. I'm going to put 012 for the directors. I just want to do parity.
Do you usually see those CBAs going down in their percentages?
I think it depends on the year and what they're looking for.
Okay.
Sometimes they're looking for additional benefits besides salary. So, I have been part of contracts. I mean, the last police contract was 01333.
Okay.
So, there is...
Or management rights or something to that.
Exactly, yeah. It's negotiated. So, there are, sometimes it is below three, yes.
Is there anything outside of pay that we are keeping on parity with benefit-wise?
I think we have one of the best benefit packages in the state. It's equal or better than others. There are other incentives that people want more time off, more vacation time, more sick time.
Sure.
So, yeah, we go through all that during negotiations and come up with an agreement that the council believes that we can afford and the union body is happy with.
Okay. Just one clarification. Thank you.
Last call, council chambers, public comment on the budget? Moving to Zoom, please raise your hand to be let in and unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Tricia Hunt, 526 Camp Westwood Road. Firstly, just wanted to publicly thank the team that met with me on Zoom for the hour and a half. I got all of my questions answered and then some. I also just wanted to kind of say on the record that last year during budget hearings, I had compared our budget a lot to a similar standing budget, and I had said, like, I would love if our budget could be like this one, like with narratives and like, so we can really understand all the amazing things that each department is doing in our town because as much as we struggle as a community, I think there also is a lot to celebrate and that we are moving forward. And I was just so happy to see that this budget this year included a lot more of those narratives and that we're really moving forward to create a budget that's comprehensive. That being said, I hope to see even more improvements next year in the way the budget's presented. Just some suggestions is, that similar town that I often compare to, there is a wonderful page that kind of details salaries for, like, major departments and things like that. And I think that's a repeated question that we're hearing. So, I know that we could break down the budget a bit more to give more clarity to residents. I love seeing how many residents are participating and asking questions this year. But maybe a salary page in the way that Cumberland does it might be helpful in getting ahead of some of these questions and then as you're already planning, you know, to break down certain line items a little bit better. The question I had post our meeting, after I had time to digest things, is where do we in our budget kind of keep track of? Sometimes we'll say, oh, well, we're going to use this as like a one-time expense. Do we put money, is that what comes from impact or is that what comes from capital?
Yeah, so as part of the budget, that would be primarily under capital. Impact fees are not part of this budget. Those are what you see at various meetings where the directors come forward. They know how much is available in their impact fee line, and then they make a, propose a resolution to the council to approve. So, strictly one-time items in this budget, you would see under the capital.
Okay, so then, I guess my only lingering suggestion I have for this budget is that when we think about, and I know we talked about the distressed funds and how it seems like they will be reoccurring, but I still have trepidation, and I know it's just a matter of line items, and the money could potentially be used for operational costs. But I would love if there would be a way that we could keep somewhere in our budget or in our accounting those funds separate. Because, again, I just have a fear that they will go away because it's not a guarantee, and now it's already been very absorbed in an operational budget, and it could create future larger increases to budgets not related to some of our goals that we have moving forward, if that makes sense.
Again, it really becomes a balancing act, right? This council is very conscious to, you know, the impact that the taxes have on the taxpayers. So, in an effort to try to keep the tax revenue at its lowest point, with, again, all those, all those budgets that's proposed is going up 4.79%. You know, we're only looking to raise the tax rate by 1.6%. If we were to take that 600-plus thousand of distressed community aid and allocate it to a capital fund or a separate fund, you're looking of an increase of roughly another 1% to the tax rate. So, it's trying to balance it off. I agree with you 100% that in three years, right, or two years out, we may see distressed community aid decrease. At that point, my suggestion would be you'd have to look at the budget and say, okay, do we have to cut back on some of the capital items that are in the budget? Cut back on some of the road paving or what other changes could be made? But at this time, at least as a decision of town manager, I would include that in the budget so that we could try to maintain the lowest possible tax increase possible.
Okay, thank you. I totally respect that. That's the choice that you're making, and I can see how important it is that we keep the tax increases as low as possible. I just want to make sure it's something that residents and the town council is just ready and prepared for, for if those monies go away, you know, us knowing that that's either going to be taking away some things that currently are going to be in place for the next two years or it would, you know, lead to a greater tax increase. I am fine with you doing it that way. I guess I just kind of wanted to say what my thoughtful opinion is, and I respect you, you know, going a different way, but that's just what I wanted to say on record. And I, again, I just really, really appreciate the town council and all that you've done with this budget. It is, it is leaps and bounds improved from last year. So, thank you again.
Vice President Verducci?
Yeah, I just wanted to say to Tricia, thank you very much for all your input. And I think the issue you just raised will actually be helped with the other issue that you raised, which is if we can track these items in, you know, a categorical narrative, I think we'll know exactly how these things, you know, kind of happen and get updated every year. So, you know, if we did have to primarily fund something with a limited source, you know, it'll be on the record when we go to pick that up later in the year or two years from now, you know, we'll always know kind of what the genesis of that was so we don't get caught in the trap of, you know, over-operationalizing some of those line items. So, really appreciate your point on that and fully support the idea of next year having a, you know, a little bit more fun presentation. It's budgets. It's fascinating. Everybody loves it.
Thank you. I do. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you, Ms. Hon. Anyone else on Zoom? Raise your hand to be let in. Please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Stacy Nichols, Lewis Farm Road. So, I just want to make sure I'm understanding, because the last speaker brought up a good point. So, our distressed community funds are currently just being wrapped into our general budget, and so essentially, we cannot function without these distressed community funds. Is there a way to proactively look at programming and cuts that we may need? I am just a person who is very realistic, looking at the state of the federal government, the state of the economy right now, watching everybody having to make cuts in everything. Is there a way to plan now? Because my fear is, is that future council will be left with a budget that was funded by these distressed community funds, and it's very hard to clawback programs, is my concern. I personally would rather make cuts now and use those distressed funds to stay very small and pay for what we need versus we are kind of growing a little bit using those distressed community funds, and it's going to be even harder, should they go away, to come back. That's my question.
I think each budget year is its own entity. So, the funds that we received this year, we weren't planning on receiving. The director said definitely helped out. It's probably 1% less of a tax increase. Next year, we're going to get either the same or more, and then the following year, we'll have to see. But we do have a five-year projection. The five-year projection doesn't really have distressed community money in there. It's plans for the future, like you talked about. But I think it's important to remember that distressed communities is, again, it's not guaranteed, and it will be something that we would have to take a look at and maybe cut back on capital or some other items. But to curtail programming now in anticipation of a problem, a possible problem, two years from now, I don't think is the right way to pursue it. So, I think the budget is really responsible as it is, but using the funds that we have allocated to us, and then we'll have to make adjustments as the, as the years go on.
Vice President Verducci?
And just to kind of go off of that note, these decisions aren't in a vacuum with that own funding stream. So, you know, one thing we have that we're all aware of, a lot of development coming down the road. You know, we talked about those earmarked funds, impact fees. You know, so the impact fees bucket will be going up, will also be growing as a community. So, distressed community will be one avenue. And quite frankly, I don't know if we want to count on that because it's not indicative of a good economic standing. So, you know, as the town manager was saying, there are the other funds also that are going to be needed to grow in certain areas. As that development comes in, your commercial side hopefully will increase as well. So, we've got to look at it in totality, but totally understand the point. You don't want to inflate your base based on, you know, assuming you're going to receive future funds. But it's definitely something we need to keep an eye on. So, thank you.
Anyone else on Zoom? Please raise your hand to be let in. Public hearing Zoom going once, twice, three times. All right, members of the council, do I hear a motion to close public hearing? Oh, sorry.
Two things. You should not close the public hearing. You should continue it until Saturday, at which time you will reconvene to have an additional public hearing.
Okay.
The other question that I had was, from a legal standpoint, I saw at the last council meeting a memorandum of understanding between the schools and the town as it related to this year's budget plug number for deficit reduction. My understanding is that we stand somewhere between a 5.7 and a $5.8 million cumulative deficit with the schools. Under state law, it is a requirement that there be a corrective action plan that addresses a particular budget plug number for five years running. Where do we stand on that, and is there a memorandum of understanding to that effect?
So, based on our most recent meeting with the Audit General's Office, which was last week, Audit General and Municipal Finance, they were made aware of the agreement that the town and the school had for tackling it in the fiscal 2026 budget, which I believe, again, the council has seen that memorandum of understanding or agreement. And we'll be working on that five-year budget projection. We've actually already provided some documents, the five-year budget projections, both the school and the town provided that to both those state agencies. We'll be looking to finalize and formalize those documents for presentation to the town council, and same would go for the school committee, at which time we'll present the final documents upon approval. The Audit General knows our fiscal 2024 audit. We're expecting to have it completed in the month of May, and at that time, they'll have the hard figure for that. the hard figure for that deficit, which I believe is actually between 5.8 and 5.9, a 5.8 million, 5.9 million. And then we can formalize the documents once we have that.
Okay. Mr. Cowherd.
Uh, just to add to that, so the five-year projection that the school department made, the last version has the updated allocation from the town plus the adjustments that we made, which are, which are reflected in that agreement. So over the five years, it shows the town's contribution, what the school anticipates contributing, and then the final outcome at the end of five years, us addressing that long-term deficit. So in many ways, and I'm not putting words in the Audit General's mouth, but he kind of alluded to the fact that our five-year projection almost represents what that deficit reduction plan is going to be. So I think unless, unless the guys here say I'm misinterpreting or misunderstanding, I think with some slight adjustments to our projection, just to make sure we're hitting the number exactly where it lands after the 24 audits done, is that, that document can be embedded into, um, I think a memo and become the deficit reduction plan that the town and school department will look at and then after that be submitted.
Thank you. Vice President Verducci.
Is it, um, are we assuming at that point in time, well, we'll need the details to roll up to the numbers that are in the five-year plan? Or at any point are they kind of letting us go with that top level line item, you know, that gets us to full 5.8 million? Or at any point in time do we have to explain annually how we're doing each piece?
I'll, I'll let, I'll let Bob chime in, but the way it, the way it kind of rolls out is, um, once you get past that first year, it's all assumptions after that. And the assumptions are built on what we know, obviously not what we don't know. So I'm, I'm sure that every year there'll have to be tweaks and adjustments based on revenue, based on expenses, based on other things that we're not aware of. But like, for example, the CBA, the agreement that we have, we have two unions we negotiate with, um, just like the conversation we had earlier about what the percent increase is, we built our five-year projection, which goes well beyond the expiration date of the last contract. So we, we pick a percentage and say, we anticipate about this much. If it's more than that or less than that, then you have to adjust that for both unions. Same thing with, uh, health benefits and, and prescription and dental. You know, we went to a new plan, which is more of a traditional plan, not a self-insured plan. We have percent increases based on, uh, some projections based on, you know, year-over-year, uh, estimated costs. If it goes higher than we're projecting, then we're going to have to adjust that.
Thanks. Uh, Solicitor Angel.
Final comment is that the council will need to vote to accept the corrective action plan, complete with assumptions and complete with projections. And you'll also need to reconcile in how this year's plug number fits with that. So keep that in mind, please. You're not done.
All right, a public hearing still open. Um, we do have one other item of business tonight, executive session. So at this time I'll seek a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Councilman Capaldi. Second by Councilman Brown. Any discussion? We'll be going into executive session for one item around general law, section 42-46-5A4 for prosecutorial proceedings related to allegations of misconduct. There's no discussion, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
I'm sorry.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Or in the affirmative zero and the negative, motion passes.
We'll now go into executive session.
Ready. Could I have a motion to come out of executive session?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Vice President Verducci, second by Councilwoman Capaldi. Any discussion? Hearing non-clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi.
Yes.
Vice President Verducci.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Four in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
Could I have a motion to seal the minutes of executive session?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Capaldi, second by Vice President Verducci. Any discussion? Hearing non-clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi.
Yes.
Vice President Verducci.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Four in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
Members of the public, the council met in executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law Section 42-46-5A4 for investigatory proceedings related to allegations of misconduct. A discussion was had, no votes were taken. And at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:49 PM.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Capaldi.
Second.
Second by Vice President Verducci.